Welcome, everyone, to the Gray Town Council Workshop of June 3, 2025. This is the last workshop of this regular session. I will begin with roll call. Councilor Robinson.
Present.
Councilor Gass is on remotely.
Present.
She says present. I'm Councilor Chapel. Councilor Johnson is excused for the evening. And to my right is Town Manager Michael Foley. We're joined this evening by representatives from Royer Advisors and Accountants to review our recently completed FY 2023 audit. Would you like to come to the podium? Yep.
I am Justin Berg from Royer Advisors and Accountants. And we were engaged to complete the fiscal year '23 audit in the, I believe it was August, September timeline of '24. So a little ways after that fiscal year had ended, this was our first audit engagement with the town of Gray. Just wanted to go over a couple of the, as you can imagine, challenges. First-year audit is generally challenging to begin with. There were some other challenges due to the prior year. There was some fraud uncovered, so that kind of obviously puts your radar up a bit. And then, on top of that, the administration that was part of the last audited year was not intact for the year we were auditing. And then, by the time we were auditing, those folks really weren't around anymore. So it was a lot of trying to uncover history without really the sources all in place.
Thank you for outlining that. We're highly aware of it, but it's good for the public to hear the background.
Sure.
Thank you.
That all being said, things, I believe, went pretty smoothly. You know, we were able to complete our audit, and right out of the gate, it was a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest, best, well, it's the best opinion you can receive. And that is basically us expressing our opinion of reasonable assurance that the town's financial statements in total are materially stated. And I will start with just, there should have been a stand-alone letter addressed to essentially the councilors.
Yep.
It's our letter to those charged with governance. I assume you may have read that. If not, just basically points out the timing, scope, any issues or difficulties we ran into. As you can see by the language, there really wasn't any difficulties with management, no disagreeance. Management did a really nice job coming in after the fact and retroactively going back to clean up the books for fiscal year '23. So from us as an auditor, from the audit perspective, everything was really clean, per se. I think we had a reclass entry that, just one, that didn't change your guys' bottom line at all. It was really just kind of shifting things from one bucket to another for presentation purposes. That being said, you know, that's a good testament to management's work in preparing for the audit in itself. And in our management rep letter, you will, if you hadn't, you would see that we did comply with all ethical requirements regarding independence. We are independent from the town. Basically, the financial statements, the accounting records, everything is, you know, management, and there's a fine line between auditor and management. And, let's see here. There really was no audit findings, per se. There was no material weaknesses, no deficiencies. There were a couple pieces of evidence that we were trying to track down, most of which was eventually captured. And then, for a couple of smaller insignificant things, we were able to kind of create some alternative procedures to arrive at a, you know, basically gather significant appropriate audit evidence. And again, the challenge of trying to go back and work through people who aren't here.
Yes, indeed.
So, yes. That is the management rep letter. I don't know if there's any questions. It was pretty smooth sailing. Nothing overly concerning to report about the books, management, the audit itself. And then, I figured I would just go through parts of the audit. I don't know how familiar everyone is with basically, like, what the audit is, or what's actually in the audit report. But it's a risk-based audit on your financial statements. It's not really a fraud audit.
Right.
Obviously, if we found fraud, and given the history, it was certainly on our radar, which it's always on the radar, but we did not come across any indications of fraud in any way, which obviously is a nice thing.
Yeah, thank you for noting that.
Yes. So, again, just, you know, there is a clear line between management and the auditor. Generally, we will help put the financials together. Management was able to essentially compile and put the financials together in total. In theory, if we had proposed adjusting journal entries, that's on them to decide if they accept them, or if they make sense. There was one reclass that amongst management, they reviewed and agreed that it made sense. And again, that was really just kind of shifting a revenue that was netted, or an expense that was netted in a revenue account, just to kind of break it out so you have the proper accounting trail.
Okay. Was that a significant sum of money? Or was...
In total, I believe it was about $99,000. It was, it's related to one of the TIF districts. It was essentially an abatement that was netted against the Betty revenue.
Yeah.
Which, in theory, it kind of makes sense why they would have done that, but don't really, like, especially when you're comparing budget to actual, and your Betty revenue, what you were expecting is $100,000 off.
Okay.
You just felt it was appropriate to clean that up, per se.
So that will be accurate going forward?
It should be, yes, I would imagine so.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, could you just make sure that you define Betty for folks?
Oh, yeah. Can we define Betty? I know it's like business enterprise. I forget what the rest...
It's a business equipment tax exemption program.
Thanks.
Did you have any questions, Ann, since we had a pause here?
No, not really, not really right now.
Okay.
Okay. So, in the actual audit report, you have your first section, which is the management discussion and analysis. For someone who's not really, well, the financial statements can be pretty dry in general. That's a great place to start. It's really kind of a digestible narration and breakdown of all the key, important financial aspects of the year. And from there, you get into the actual financial statements, followed by the notes. The notes will give you greater detail on processes and the actual, like, how numbers are arrived at, kind of the guts. And then, there are some supplementary schedules that, well, your management discussion analysis and your budgetary comparison schedule are required per Gassby reporting. And then, you have, well, I think this year was scaled back, but you do have some other supplementary information relating to your, I believe it's your capital reserve balances We don't necessarily audit that, but we do obviously tie it into the full financials to make sure that A and B actually connect, and it's not, you know, we don't go through the nitty-gritty of it, but in total, we do tie it back to the audited financial statements. And that schedule I was referencing is the last page, I believe, on page 32 and 33. So, clean opinion, always good. And as far as actual results, did want to point out that management did quite extensive work on doing some prior period restatement to some of the debt totals, capital assets, and depreciation, really just to improve the accuracy and, you know, that everything is truly stated. And so, by going back to go forward, they did a handful of restatements that essentially adjusted the '22 results. And there is a pretty thorough note disclosure that basically walks you through each step of what was restated, what was the impact of that.
I remember reading that, but can you remind me what page that's on?
Yes, that's on page 28.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. And Mike, Justine, and basically the management team are the ones who did all that work. And, you know, if there were questions on their processes, per se...
Sure.
Could obviously take that up with them. Subsequent events are things that, well, there was nothing to, basically a recognized event where we had to adjust the books, but there were some additional leases and new debt that happened after year-end. Obviously, we're kind of lagging, so it's kind of a bulletin of things that have happened looking into the future, just so that the user can see kind of some of the major impact, you know, new debt, big things that are happening in the town that maybe weren't affecting the books at end of the, excuse me, fiscal year '23. And budget was, I believe there was a couple departments that came in over budget. In total, though, the town was well under their budget expenses by over $1 million. So, as far as any recourse, you know, you were definitely well below your budget expenditures. Revenues came in higher than expected. This is on page 30. This is a very useful document. It goes from the approved budget, any adjustments, to a final budget, and then the actual results. All in all, you know, you would budget at a deficit where you actually had a surplus, so that's a good thing. Just looking for, you know, obviously, it's a budget, but it doesn't always work out perfectly. But if, you know, if we start seeing a recurring line item or department that is continually way over-budgeted...
Yeah.
And in time, we'll, you know, gain those insights to maybe share with you or management.
Yeah, that was a fairly large sum, which we've talked about at council meetings. I know Manager Foley is addressing that going forward, but yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, I don't know if there's any specific questions. There really wasn't anything odd, per se, or, like, it was really just the time to gather the appropriate evidence to essentially confirm, you know, that what the town prepared was indeed materially stated. And as far as, you know, it's really kind of a management function as far as the strategic planning and where balances are at, but nothing overly concerning, you know. It seems like things are being monitored. Obviously, you don't want to increase your debt load too much. Capital assets, want to be monitoring existing ones for replacement, and obviously planning for new, big things that might be coming down the pipeline. Excuse me. Nothing scary, per se, to report, other than just the time it took to get through it.
Yep.
Yeah, and I don't know if any specific questions on or concerns?
I thought this was great. I've read through it pretty thoroughly, just given our history.
Okay.
So, I thought it was reassuring just to see all the things you're speaking to now that, you know, there was no issues, and that management had done a good job organizing some inconsistencies from the past. I guess, just one question for you. You are, your company is working on that FY '24...
We are, and we've already started.
Okay. Do you have a, what's the timeline looking for?
Well, we're waiting, we have the nucleus. There are some lingering adjustments to, like, the capital reserves, I believe it is, or are. But we've already jumped into a lot of what will be our audit, essentially. Once we have basically everything finalized, we'll import it into our software. We'll plan a field day. I'm assuming, based on my discussions with management, I would suspect at the latest, sometime early July, we'll come back up and do a field day here, and then do interviews and test things and all that fun stuff. As far as a finished timeline, in a perfect world, I, you know, we're hoping for, like, you know, late August, early September.
Okay. Certainly better than our...
It's certainly much faster.
Certainly better than our FY '23 timeline, so I appreciate that.
Yes. And that, you know, obviously, we don't want to chase our tails and go too far and then have to, you know, redocument and essentially chase our tails. So, we're kind of at a stopping point now, but I did talk to management before the meeting, and I think it's going to be sooner than later that we can, you know, push through the bulk of what's left.
Okay, that's great news.
Yep.
Levi, did you have...
Yeah, I do. So, obviously, the capital reserves fund is up in front as a major fund. Is there any breakdown of that individually? Because I imagine land acquisition is in that. Obviously, the other supplementary has all the other governmental funds lumped in the back, but I didn't see kind of a split of what the capital reserves fund was made up of.
If I may, Matt, here?
Yep.
So, that's an item that we're working on developing as part of our reconciliation efforts. So, it's not something that they audited as part of this, but we're working to make sure those are outlined. To his point about the corrections that we made from the '22 audit and the fiscal year '24 audit, we will make corrections to the fiscal year '23 audit, and you'll have some of the things, the issues stated again with the change in fund balance, the, you know, the over, the under-budgeting, underspending, over-collecting in revenues. That will repeat in '24, since I came in late in the '24, made some changes in order to better support the town, both financially. And so, those things will repeat, but we'll be looking to hopefully have a better reconciliation. One of the reasons that, as part of our budget process, that we proposed borrowing for some of the capital expenses that we have is we're still not 100% certain on what our capital reserve and other designated funds or reserve funds have for balances. We want to make sure that we have those articulated to the specific projects, so we know where we're at on those things. And that'll be something that we'll report to the town council when we complete that reconciliation. And we'll hopefully have that completed sometime during this year, and then we'll be in a much better place for planning for budgeting purposes next year to be able to show everyone what all these balances are.
And the second question I had, so we have something that's been brought up before is our fund balance policy, which the charter says one thing, and then the policy says another. And I've mentioned also kind of the Gassby version of it. So, I just wanted to hear and have you, you know, have your take on it for the citizens.
Sure. Well, as far as the mismatch in policy, I don't know if I'm aware of the mismatch, but are you looking for interpretation?
Just guidance.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I've seen it a few different ways. One thing I've seen more than once in similar, I guess I'd say similar-sized towns in this region, is having a fund, an unassigned fund balance that's basically like two to three months' worth of your appropriation going forward. I mean, you know, the goal is that, you know, the town's not going to go bankrupt and things seize up, but just as a benchmark target, that seems to be pretty common. I know a few of my towns I deal with are kind of in that, whatever, I think it's like 16.66, yeah.
Yep.
So, other than that, it's, the other things I've seen are, well, I guess they actually fall within that same range. It's just more maybe targeted specifically versus that open range. I mean, as I get more acclimated with the town and, like, rather than looking at, well, I'm always kind of looking at the past, but being more current, it'll certainly be helpful in just kind of understanding what are the big things, like, on the actual current horizon, and certainly don't want to, you know, dictate your policy or...
No, no, that's not what I...
Just as far as any suggestions, tips, or insights, or concerns, or, you know, things like that, I think going forward, the feedback will be more and more useful, just getting out of this kind of base year where there was a lot of unique circumstances.
That's just what I was hoping to hear from, because I've been 16.67%, so that was...
Okay.
I was hoping that you were going to get to that point, so...
Yeah, that seems to be pretty common, and, you know, like I said, I don't know of any towns that are, you know, facing bankruptcy or severe trouble, but that seems to be common.
I do want to give Ann a chance, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, if I may, just to speak to that, so that we have two different policies, where one, the charter just says it's between 25 and 17%, or 3/12ths and 2/12ths of the tax commitment for the municipal budget. But then, there's a policy that states the same numbers for the tax commitment total. And so, where the school department is a separate entity, they have their own fund balance policy. So whether or not we want to have a hybrid of them both, or cover them both, but also to Levi's point that, you know, the 16, 17% seems to be the average, where right now, based on what I presented during the budget, and based on these updated figures, we're at 37% of fund balance. So, we're in significant excess, and we forecasted a plan to responsibly deal with that and not do it in one fell swoop or one full situation in one fiscal year. So, that's definitely important to manage that. And it's because of those budget variances that we've had over the years that's made that fund balance as large as it is.
Sure. Yeah, like, you know, like flying a plane, you want to have small corrections and not yo-yo up or down too fast, or period to period, and, but yeah, like, you know, taking all that into consideration, that wasn't on our radar, anything concerning to report, or, you know, not following your own policy or anything like that.
Ann, did you have anything you'd like to comment on or questions?
I have no questions. I was really delighted to read this report and see the, you know, positive place that the town got to after some upheaval, and I really think it's, I want to congratulate Manager Foley and his staff in spending the time to do the advance work to make this audit even possible, especially with the previous staff gone. It just seems like it was a heavy lift for everyone involved, and I really appreciate all the work that went into this, and hoping that FY '24 goes a little more smoothly, and then that we'll be, you know, just back on target on, from FY '20, for the FY '25 audit and going forward.
Yeah, thank you, Ann. That's, those are important points. Did you have some...
I was just going to piggyback off that and say that you'll probably see me a few more times, more than usual, before, the goal is to get fiscal year '25 wrapped up as close to calendar year-end as well. So, that being said, we, you know, we're looking at potentially three audits issued in a six, seven-month window.
Right.
And then, from there, you'd be on a healthy track. And again, to piggyback off, was it Ann?
Yeah.
Her comments that, you know, there was a lot of hard work, and just wanted to acknowledge Mike and the finance team, and, because, I mean, quite frankly, it could have been a much bigger mess from an audit perspective to be able to even audit it.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of work that went into it, and their work, I think, paid off immensely.
Yeah, thank you for acknowledging that. Yeah, I just want to take a minute to acknowledge also Mike and Justine and Deb and Robin, who did kind of yeoman's work getting all this organized and back on track, so we certainly appreciate it.
If I may just have Justin speak to one thing about that. Would you be able to speak to kind of the improvements we've made in staffing and how you recognize that we have a little bit better of a...
Sure.
Of a check and balance system and some controls that didn't exist prior?
Right. Well, as far as the controls, we haven't been back since Deb was hired, but in theory, when we first came out, I think it was early last September of '24, it was Mike and Justine, and, you know, we're essentially looking in the past at a system that's basically outdated and not even intact. And that was one of the things we talked about, that they were looking for the right person to bring in, and they in fact did. And she had a pretty big contribution towards the end of the audit, or at least in my dealings with her at the end. So, it seems like it was a solid person to bring in, has a good pulse on governmental accounting, the financials, so I think she's going to be invaluable to the whole process in general. When we come back out, we'll discover more exactly about what the actual improvements, the controls were, but just having that second person in the finance team really, you know, provides a lot of segregation of duties, and we'll get a better handle on what's actually changed, but the fact that someone's here, that's a huge improvement.
Yeah, agreed. I think, I know where the town went wrong in the past was just having one person overseeing all that, so that was...
And it's a tough balance, because, I mean, another person is obviously an expense and...
Sure.
But I think it seems to be the right move, and, you know, the town, in my perception, seems to be kind of on the up and up, and a lot of activity, so, you know, I don't think it's a bad investment at all.
Yeah, agreed. And, you know, we're a much larger town with a larger budget than we were 10 years ago, so having staffing that supports that makes sense.
I agree.
Ann, did you want to say something?
Actually, I was going to chime in and say exactly what you just did. You know, we're, I think a lot of people feel Fubray is a smaller rural town, but in fact, I mean, our budget is tens of millions of dollars. I mean, if you ran a business, you wouldn't expect to have just one or two, you know, people in charge of the budget. You would need more folks to handle all the complicated, you know, sources of revenue and places that money goes over the course of the year. And so, I really wanted to chime in and just say I'm grateful to Michael for seeing that and for hiring the appropriate people to make sure that we're adequately staffed, so this kind of thing won't happen again, or is less likely to, I guess. To be clear, yeah, I want to be, I want to acknowledge what the auditor said, you know, which is that their job is just to audit the books, and it's not a forensic audit, and that's the case every year. I mean, it's not, their job is not to come in and locate fraud, although they do keep it on the open floor.
That's a good point, Ann. Thank you. I guess I just had a couple, like, kind of questions in the weeds, but since we're here, might as well ask. So, in the last two pages, the 32 and 33, I know you said you didn't audit these special revenue funds and trust accounts that we have, but you were listing them here. I'm just, this is more of a question for staff, I guess. A lot of these feel, well, they're restricted, I imagine, in their use, but they feel like things we either don't do anymore or outdated, and I guess I'm just wondering, there's quite a bit of money here. What happens to these funds if we can no longer use them, but they're restricted for certain purposes that don't really exist anymore?
So, this is part of the reconciliation process that we're doing for those. Some of these may or may not exist in the future, and so, when we recognize what the actual requirements are, we don't know what everything is, their funds, we've discovered and things of that nature. But where these are fiscal year '23-specific, some of them can be, like, merged together, like, there's the Pennile Town Clock and the Pennile Municipal Complex, that's money that was donated to support maintaining the facility, things of that nature. Some of these will, you know, definitely, the ones that we don't think we need anymore or aren't appropriate...
Like Stimson Hall?
Yeah, we will work to try to come to talk to the council or let the council know where we propose to dispose of those and where those may or may not go.
So, we do have authority to move those funds around if we feel that's not...
So, yeah, depends on what it is. And some of them, we have to find what the restrictions are established, so we have to do research, we have to look up meeting minutes, we have to try to find old letters that, of donations that were received, and those are all, that's a process that, you know, we've been trying to get caught up in audits, and we'll do more of that. So, this, some of this may exist as part of the fiscal year '24 audit still, but when we get to fiscal year '25, we'll hopefully have reconciled and managed those in a more appropriate manner.
Okay. Yeah, and some of them are scholarships, which I know, I don't know, a few councils ago, we realized one of them wasn't, had been spent down improperly, and we kind of had refunded, but I'm not clear if that was reflected here or not, so...
Yeah, we don't know exactly all those. But some of them are funds, like, so the landfill closure, those are funds that we need to maintain. Some of the pit reclamation, those are ones that we need to maintain. So, some of them will need to be maintained for a long time, the planning board escrow, the, you know, so those will need to be maintained, but we need to be more specific and have them be appropriated in the right way.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to capture that, since some of these I didn't even know were something we had, so. I feel like there was another question I had, but it's escaping me at the moment. Ann or Levi, did you have anything else you wanted to mention? Anne or Levi, did you have anything else you wanted to mention?
No, I don't.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Thought it'll probably come to me in 10 minutes, but that's okay. Well, I just want to thank you for your time. Is there anything you'd like to add before we close?
Not, well, just that, you know, it's nice working with the town, you know, look forward to a continued relationship and, you know, trying our hardest to get you guys back on track. And I think there's a plan in motion and should be assured that, you know, I think it's achievable and by the time fiscal year '26 rolls around, you'll have been settled and on the right track.
Great, that's great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and for your time. Since we do have people here and we have time, I would like to open it up for public comment, if people would like to make a comment. I don't think we have any members of the public online.
Nope, there's nobody online.
Is there anyone from the public like make a comment on the FY '23 audit?
Sure.
If you could, I know
You can
Yeah, you could just, yes, sit and then switch places there.
The question I have is, did your audit include any TIF reconciliations or anything like that, with our TIF accounts?
It did.
Yep.
Pretty thorough. Management did a thorough job of putting it all together and then we tested expenses and just the general, the way they work and the percentages, but that was part of the audit, which is typical.
Sorry, I'm just going to repeat what you said because people at home can't see you or hear you. He did note that there were TIF reconciliations in the audit and that management did a good job noting those.
Okay. And you noticed that one of them was negative for an ending balance, correct?
Yeah.
And is that normal in a TIF account to have negative balance?
If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the podium to answer.
None of the ones, none of the ones in the audit reflect a negative balance, no.
Right, that's what I was going to say. I didn't, because I would agree that's not typical.
Well, there was.
Really.
There may have been in years prior, but it's not reflected in this audit.
Yeah, the TIF funds are noted on page 33 of the audit and they're all in positive ending balances.
Because that would be something I would mention. Yeah, a negative balance would not be a good indication.
Yeah, but your audit doesn't note any negative balances?
No, I didn't believe it did, that's why.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Was there a page you, or are you looking at something?
Yeah. I think I just didn't be able to talk. Sorry.
Fran, if you, if you would just come back up to the podium when you're ready because people can't hear you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to echo what's said many times, but I can't take full responsibility for the work that was done. You know, I'm the conductor of the organization, but Justine did a ton of work with the support of an outside accounting person that we hired, Mark Roy from Blue Star Accounting, that I had let the council know was helping us to reconcile because we didn't necessarily have the staff. He helped us both to reconcile fiscal year '23 and also fiscal year '24. And now with the support of Debbie joining us earlier this year, you know, she's able to, as he mentioned, help us close out this audit and help us with the fiscal year '24 audit. So now we have the staff in place that can kind of do some of the work that an outside person was doing. But getting us all caught up was critical in my time being hired here was to get us reorganized and get us back on track. And hopefully, we'll be back on track by the end of the calendar year, if not shortly after, to get fiscal year '25 done in the timeline. We are not the only municipality that's in this situation. Municipal auditors are very difficult to find. We had to essentially work to negotiate with Royer to have them audit our firm. They had let us know they were interested after a recent RFP. And we had a time where we had an auditor that agreed to audit us who decided they didn't want to, and then working to find this firm. So this is a great, well-respected firm. They don't have a ton of municipalities, so they have the ability to take us on and manage us and get our stuff done in a timely manner, where some auditing firms have a ton of municipalities and they kind of get bogged down and everyone gets delayed around them. And so we're hopeful that our relationship with them can be long-term and hopefully be in a much more timely manner going forward. So I just want to, again, thank everyone involved for all their work, but I can't take full credit for it. The team has done an outstanding job.
Thanks, Mike. And I failed to recognize that consultant that you manage, you mentioned, so thank you, that was helpful. Fran, did you have any further comments?
I'll just pass on the question and it probably went above.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I found the question.
All right, well, since no one else is here, I will close public comment and just want to thank you again for your time
Thank you, yeah.
and all the energy that went into completing this. We really appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
And we are adjourned for our workshop and we will reconvene, well, I guess we can, we have a note, we can start early. So let's take a 10, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 6:47 for our regular meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular Town Council meeting of June 3, 2025. We are starting a little bit early this evening because our workshop ended early, but we will reserve any voting items with the exception of the minutes for, once we hit the seven o'clock hour. The meeting is being held both in person and online. You can find a link to the meeting portal online in the agenda on our website. Just a note for anyone joining us online, if you would like to make a comment during public comment portions of the agenda, just please raise your virtual hand so that we can note that you would like to make a comment. And I will begin with roll call. Counselor Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Gass, who's joining us remotely?
Present.
Counselor Chapel. Counselor Johnson is excused for the evening. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Before I move to ask about unanimous consent for the minutes, does anyone have any edits that they'd like to make? I can remove it.
No.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the May 20, 2025 Regular Town Council meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
And no one is opposed to unanimous consent?
No.
Okay, great. So I will move on to council communications. And first up is a report from Council Chair, that's me. I just would like to say, take a minute to say thank you to our town, residents, and staff. This is my, this is my last meeting of this session, but also the last meeting of my term. I'm completing my fourth year on the council. I will say I've learned a lot about municipal governments in the four years I've been doing this, but also I've learned a lot about our town and the people who live here. I'm just really appreciative to be part of this community. And I also am appreciative to the staff that's come on board since I've been here. I think we're in a really good position going forward with some professional folks leading the way. And I have every confidence that they will be making good decisions on your behalf going forward. So I just want to wish incoming council good luck and just keep a positive attitude because I think we're on the right track here in our community. So other than that, I don't have updates to share beyond that because it's the summer and people are busy doing other things. So I will move on to council correspondence and committee reports. Levi, do you want to start yourself?
Yeah, so I would just piggyback on that and say I want to thank you also for your time serving as a counselor. And, you know, even in my short time here, I've learned a lot from, especially your passion for the community. So I wanted to thank you for that as well. And say that no matter the result of the election next week, it's also been a privilege for me to work alongside the current council. Yeah, I think that's all I've got.
We've enjoyed having you here, Levi. Thank you for committing your time. Ann?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just would also like to jump in and thank Krista for her work, not only for chairing the council the last couple of years, but also prior to that, she was Chair of the Comp Plan Committee that resulted in the hugely popular, or huge approval for the 2020 Comp Plan in the fall of November, you know, in November of 2020. And that was a big deal. That was a multi-year effort with a lot of public outreach and engagement. And I, and just took a lot of time and thought. And Krista did a great job with that, as she has on the council throughout. She's just been a really steady contributor. And we're going to miss you, Krista, anytime you want to come back.
Okay, well, keep that in mind, Ann. Thank you. Did you have any reports on your committees or have they been enacted?
Oh, yeah. My, none of my committees have met since the last council meeting. I did have someone reach out to me on my council Facebook page about adding a visibility mirror to the intersection of Brown Street and Yarmouth Road. It could be, the issue is it can be hard to see around the corner when the congregational church is in session or having some kind of an event. And so Michael and his staff are looking into it. And I, the other thing I just wanted to mention is I just want to know how pleased I am that the striping got done in the village so early in the season, something I've been asking for, for over a decade. And, and the, none of the previous managers seemed to be able to figure out how to do that. And, and this manager and his staff did. I really, shout out to Tim SDs and the network. I think it just makes a huge difference because we, he may be able to follow up with striping at the end of the summer so that we go into the fall and winter season with, with brighter striping than we maybe had in the past. So it just makes a huge difference to help people navigate the village safely.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, I agree. It's, it's great to see the striping down when people are walking especially.
Yeah.
The Wild Blueberry Festival Committee is scheduled to meet again on June 9, which is the day before our session officially ends. I was planning to attend, but unfortunately I have a work commitment that evening that I can't get out of. So I'll send them a note just noting a new counselor will be joining them once the new session begins. And hopefully there are lots of volunteers in August for our ninth annual festival. So I think everyone's pretty excited about that. The Greater Portland Council of Governments also wrapped up its session this fiscal year. The annual summit and assembly, which happened on May 29, Counselor Johnson and Town Manager Foley were there representing Gray, as was I. It was really a great turnout. There was a panel discussion about some interesting projects going on in Cape Elizabeth where they've had to close a road. You may, some people may have read about this in the news. They had to close a road that connected Scarborough and Cape Elizabeth due to the road constantly flooding because it goes right over the marsh there. So the councils actually got together and decided jointly to make that decision. And they've sought a lot of funding from the state and some federal agencies to safely remove the road so that they can rehabilitate the marsh. It doesn't have direct impact on the work here in Gray, other than just a really good example of some regional cooperation between towns. So that was interesting. And then we just had some time together to reflect on the year and the work we're all doing. And it was, it was nice to have that opportunity. I would just encourage the residents of Gray and the future council to stay engaged with Greater Portland Council of Governments. We don't have a member representing us on the executive committee as of next session, so we won't have direct access to the goings on, with the exception of the frequent newsletters we receive from them. But they really do offer a lot of services to member municipalities. I know we'll be engaging with them on some facilitation work potentially. There's the housing assessment that's coming up for, that they've done. And I think we're presenting on later this summer. But just, just a reminder to take them up on services as things come up because that's what our, our membership fee pays for. And I guess that's all I have for committee reports. Ordnance Advisory Committee has not met since we had our workshop here. And I believe Doug is retiring next week. So yes, thank you, Doug, for your time. And I'll send him a note also. Just some correspondence I received. We had some communications from residents about some of the temporary election signs that our town clerk was kind enough to respond to that about. We also had an inquiry from a resident on one of the capital projects that's in the FY '26 budget around the fuel system replacement, which Mike replied to regarding that. The last time we met, I mentioned that Representative Graham was looking to come to speak to the council and was considering June 3, this meeting. But that obviously did not work out for her schedule. So I just want to note that she'll be planning to attend a future council meeting to discuss some of the pending legislation at the State House on this session. I also had an email from the Liberty Tree Society inquiring about whether we would be having any kind of celebration for the 250th anniversary of our country. Didn't really have a response to that. I don't think we have anything planned. But I think it felt like a kind of a general email that was going out to a lot of municipalities. But it is something to note as a celebration coming up. And then I also had a communication from the president of the Gray Water District noting some interest in continuing to engage around the zoning and that they have thoughts about the current Wellhead One and Two zones and what that will look like going forward. So I'll share that with everyone else before I sign off for the last time. And that's all I have for correspondence. So I will open it up for public comment of non-agenda items.
Tom Hannah's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skip right over that. Sorry, Mike. Before I move on to public comment, go to the agenda item for the report from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, just want to quickly take a moment to thank you for your leadership and thank you for your support of my position. It's been an honor to work with you and help transition the town government as the Chair when I started and, and the Chair again. So I appreciate all you've done. And Gray is definitely in a better place because of your time and commitment that others have mentioned, and also your, your regional focus. I think it's important that we be part of our region and work together with our regional partners, specifically GP COG. And so I'm glad that you took some leadership with them. And I hope to continue to have the community involved as much as, as I can from my perspective. So thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Mike.
So I did have a couple of slides I wanted to share real quick. So I have, we've completed our session of table talk with the town manager at Two Moms on Main Street in Gray. The last session I had yesterday was attended by a few people. And it was great to talk with them about some issues facing the community and looking forward to continue to host these events at a new location. So I wanted to let everyone know that starting in August, we will be hosting the table talk with the town manager on every, the first Wednesday of every month, starting August 6, and it'll be at 8:30 a.m. For those who don't know, Local Centric has a new cafe in there. And so we hope to try to encourage residents to check that out and come in and talk about issues or concerns or, or ask questions about things going on with the town while I'm there. Otherwise, people don't have to wait for that timeframe. People can contact me at any time. And I can work to adjust my schedule or meet with anyone at any time or any place in order to help facilitate anything that they'd like to discuss with the town. So I wanted to let everyone know about that. So again, starting August 6, the first Wednesday of the month at 8:30 a.m. at Local Centric. Looking forward to seeing some folks there. And then I just had a couple of general updates. I wanted to remind everyone to continue, if you haven't, sign up for our digital newsletter. Comes out every two weeks and has a lot of information about happenings within the town. I also wanted to let everyone know about a new agenda software. I talked about it in the last couple of meetings where we've been testing a new agenda style. And so with that, we will no longer be using the Granicus software. That was an item that, as part of our budget process, we eliminated, which cost about $13,000 for that software. And we're using a new software that's about $50 a month. So significant cost savings. And we're able to utilize our website to be able to get agendas out using the calendar function and also provide access to the old agendas through the links on our website. So I want to remind everyone about that. Our website does look a lot cleaner now without the, the meeting portal. That was essentially a Granicus portal that was dumped into our website. And so now our website seems to view a little bit better. So we're hopeful that people will find that to be a positive change and be able to access the new website or the new agendas and minutes through the Town Cloud software that we're working with. Also want to remind everyone, Election Day is June 10. There's a number of positions up for election, as well as the town budget and the referendum associated with the school budget validation. So that is all I had today. Madam Chair, and thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Okay, now I will open it up, back to this. Will, I will open up for public comment of non-agenda items. I just want to remind folks that we have a limit of three minutes per speaker. Looks like we have someone coming to the podium. Just a reminder to introduce yourself and where you live.
Yeah, hi, I'm Fran Monroe. And I'm here tonight because I need some help. I, we have Article 6 on the, on the warrant and for June 10. And it's for $315,139. So usually when there's that kind of money, there's, there's a preface that tells you what it's intended for. And so the article does state it's for activities and projects, but I couldn't find that anywhere. And so I was hoping that I could get a breakdown of what that would be including.
Okay, we can, we can address that when you're done, if you want to.
Okay, okay, good. And so that's for the current one. Now for last year's, the $455,000, I just needed an update. Did we, in fact, relocate Douglas Field? Has that been completed, that project?
I will make note of your questions and we'll address all of them. So you're wondering about-
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right.
Article 6 and then $455,000 from what, last year, the TIF? Or what are, what are you referring to?
Yeah, the appropriations from the TIF. And so, and for the comment, I'll just make the comment, for two years now, we have, we have spent $250,000 for planning and design, quarter million dollars. So that's my comment on that. And, you know, that's a lot of money. So basically, yes, and that was my other question. On the, this year, when we take out the 400, we don't have 400, that's what I, we don't have $315,000 in the TIF right now under the village TIF. We have 68, and I assume we have 122 to add to that for, up to this point. And so that's about $200,000. So my question is roughly, where's the other $100,000 going to be coming from to support the $315,000 article? So those are basically my questions that I can put finances to. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have, there's no one else here in council chambers. We do have someone, it looks like, online?
Yeah, I think, so we have someone that's here for an item later on our agenda that is, I think, are they joining by phone, John? Was that the phone number? Did she say she was joining? Somebody from the main public employment retirement system. So we had somebody joining by phone. I think that's who that is.
Okay.
And there is a member of the public that's on the chat. I don't know if they have public comment. They'd like to participate.
Just, just a note for anyone online, if you do want to make a comment right now, if you could please raise your, raise your hand virtually, then we can unmute you for a comment.
No, please.
Nope. Okay, so I will close public comment at 7:06 p.m. I just want to address some of the questions Fran had. I don't recall, and I'm having a hard time pulling it up right now, what Article 6 is for 350.
Yeah, so the Article 6 is for TIF spending for economic development activities. That's the same way it was structured in last fiscal year, as well as previous fiscal years. And we, as we identified in the budget presentations, that funding includes the Economic Development Department budget and the benefits associated with the Economic Development Director. And we talked about that as a revenue that equals those two amounts in the budget. So that, that's what those, those funds are for. And then as far as their relocation at Douglas Field, that was something that was done in a previous warrant before I arrived. And I've, I've shared with the council in the past, it's actually in violation of main TIF statutes to use TIF funds in order to construct recreation fields. And so we haven't proceeded with that as part of that, that plan. We have worked with representatives of Little League to see if there's potentially other opportunities for fields. And we've worked with the property owner who abuts Douglas Field, who's willing to allow the Little League to continue using that field as it stands. And we'll continue to work with folks on that. And then the, the fact, the presentation that there's not enough in the TIF balance that Mr. Monroe mentioned, there's not currently enough to, to fund next fiscal year. But when next fiscal year comes, the fund will be repopulated with the taxes from the village TIF that are there. So that happens on an annual basis, that funds get added. And so there are, there are appropriate funds to support the economic development budget. As part of next year's budget, which I've also mentioned during budget hearings, we'll be working to restructure the TIFs here in the town of Gray and provide a recommendation for that, that ultimately the voters will have a say in as part of the budget warrants. And we hope to craft a situation that positively affects the financial situation for the town of Gray in the years ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to note, when we do allocate funds from the TIFs as part of the budgeting process for projects and staff that we, that we identify in the coming year, if we don't end up utilizing all those funds that we've allocated, they don't, they don't go away. We don't lose them. They just go back into the TIF account where we can reallocate.
They don't get transferred out. So the TIF stays within the TIF balance.
Exactly. Yeah. So I just want folks to understand. It's not, it's not like we lose that money if we don't use it. Okay. I will move on to the next agenda item. We do not have any items under Old Business. We do have a few things under New Business. First up is Resolve 2425-28, appointing Ally Brauner to the Resiliency Committee. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Ally Brauner.
So moved.
Levi? Ann, you're muted.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Any public comment on the appointment of Ally Brauner?
I'm just saying, I'm really excited to have Ally join us. And it sounds like she's going to bring a ton to the committee. I'm really excited to be working with her.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I just want to thank Ally. It sounds like she has a really interesting background with some really relevant skills for this committee. So I'm just glad to have her application.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, okay. I will go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you, Ally. And next up, I'm looking for a motion on Resolve 2425-29, to appoint Rebecca Lee as a regular member of the Library Trustees with a term expiring on August 31, 2028.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. I'll give a motion to Levi. Ann, second.
I'll go.
And then there's no one here from the public to comment. So I'll open it up to counselors. I'll go first. I just want to, again, thank Rebecca for her time in volunteering. The library is a special place, and there's a lot of transition happening there right now. So I think it'll be great to have more members on board to help through that process. Anyone else?
Want to say thank you as well?
Okay, great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I will go to vote. Levi?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And also a yes. Thank you, Rebecca. And then we will move on to orders and looking for- And then we will move on to orders and looking for a motion to approve 24, order 2425-23, which is, let me read it. I guess I should read this whole thing. A motion that hereby, the Great Town Council hereby authorizes the following changes to the town's participation in the main public employees' retirement system, or main PERS, effective August 1st, 2025. A, to add coverage under regular Plan AC for its full-time general government employees and its full-time appointed officials who regularly work at least 36 hours per week, 50 weeks per year, effective August 1st, 2025. And B, to continue to provide Special Plan 3C to its full-time firefighters who regularly work at least 40 hours per week, 52 weeks per year, and to its fire chief. And C, to exclude all other employees and appointed officials who work less than full-time or who are seasonal or temporary employees and all elected officials from participating in main PERS. And D, to allow its newly eligible general government employees and appointed officials who elect to join main PERS the option to purchase prior service for employment with the town before August 1st, 2025, upon the employee's full payment of all associated costs. The town will not participate in the purchase of prior service, and so employees who wish to purchase prior service are responsible for paying the full liability associated with this service. D, or excuse me, E, to authorize the town manager, Michael Foley, to sign the amended agreement between the town and main PERS. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Okay. So I will open it up for comment. I guess we'll give a little context.
Yeah, if I just may explain.
And then, there's no one here in the audience, but we should have public comment if anyone liked to do so online.
Thank you. If I just may briefly explain, as we talked about, we've talked about it a few times over the last year or so in personnel policy revisions that we made. And those, we added the main public employees' retirement system, retirement plan for firefighters prior to my arrival. And we discovered, just in my short tenure, that not offering the main public employees' retirement system for our general government employees has been a hindrance in our recruitment efforts. As folks who work at other municipalities and may want to come work for the Town of Gray, that's a plan that, since we didn't offer it, it would not be portable for them to come work for the Town of Gray. And then also existing employees, it's a good, in addition to recruitment, it's a good retention tool for some of our existing employees. And it does have a period in which people need to be enrolled in the system for a certain amount of time before they're able to exit the system or leave that employment. So that helps to encourage folks to stay longer here. And so in an effort to help with stability of the town, the town council supported making that change to the personnel policies. And therefore, this is just the process in which main PERS requires us to make the amendment to the plan, similar to when the town council adopted the firefighters' plan, which Anne and Krista was part of. And so we do have a representative from main public employees' retirement system here if we have any specific questions. And we also have our HR director, Jonathan Hart, here as well to answer any questions. It does have slightly an increased cost for both the employer and the employee than the current plans that we offer. But we don't know exactly the level of participation and what that may or may not cost until we've gone through and offered it out to employees. And so we do have some employees that have shared with us their interests. Given the level of retirement, I don't think it'll be a huge budgetary impact, but we did prepare for it as part of the upcoming budget. And we have ample funds available in our existing retirement budget as well to support this transition during that time.
Thanks, Mike. And I want to thank John also for really thorough and comprehensive overview of all the changes that this would entail and what it means to enroll. So thank you for that, putting that together. I guess, I just want to note one thing. I received a communication today from Counselor Johnson. He had some concern about feeling like he wanted more information about this before proceeding. So I just wanted to kind of get a straw poll from the counselors here about whether you're comfortable with proceeding with this this evening or have feelings about needing to table it for more information. I just want to, so he's not here, but I just want to respect his interest in that, so.
No, I feel like, we talked about it obviously personnel policy wise, and I mean, main PERS is, it's a pretty standard offering, you know, among municipalities. I mean, if you look at kind of the list, I was surprised really that we didn't have an offering. I mean, Matawaska, Wilton, Fort Fairfield, Orington, Limestone, Frenchville, there's just so many municipalities that, way smaller, smaller budgets, so I don't feel like it needs to go, you know, another.
Yeah. And you, we don't have an odd number on the council, so I just want to get a gut check from you also.
Yeah, I'm happy to move ahead. This is something we've talked about for a couple of years now. And I agree with Levi that, you know, it's widely utilized in the state, in towns across the state. And it can help us both recruit and retain employees and any edge that we can offer at this point in time, you know, without significant cost, seems like it's worth doing. And it's, you know, I just know, you know, it can be incredibly aggravating to work as a public employee and not be able to access different benefits. And that already is the case with social security and the main state retirement and things like that. So I just think it's, you know, it's fair to offer this if it's available and it, you know, it is something we can offer our employees.
Thanks, Anne. Yeah, I felt similarly that we had already voted on adding these changes to our personnel policy and that we had included some budgetary amounts in the FY '26 budget to support this, should that pass in June. And so I was comfortable with, you know, moving forward for this council session since we were the ones taking lead on those changes. And I felt it was appropriate to continue the process and vote on it at this meeting. So thank you for taking a minute to reflect on that, just in the interest of Counselor Johnson's concerns. I did have some, just some detailed questions about the differences between what we currently offer and the main PERS. I agree that, I think, you know, like Levi said, there's communities all around the state currently offering this, and it will provide flexibility for people who might have an interest in working here in Gray. I guess one question I had was the vesting period for main PERS is five years. And I'm just wondering, is that five years here where you currently enroll? Or can that, is that something people can move around to a different community that's had?
It's five years in the system completely. So if somebody worked two or three years in another community and then came here, they would still need to be vested. But in most cases, it's people's, it's in their best interest to try to get those five years as quickly as possible. Because otherwise, if you don't, you surrender whatever funds you've contributed to it.
Okay. And then, another question I had was the fee that you might be charged if, say, a municipality decides to remove themselves from the main PERS system. What does that look like? Is there a certain amount or is it a percentage? Does it, is it based on how long you've been participating in main PERS? And just, you know, if council, councils down the line decide this is not something they want to continue doing?
Yeah, so it would all depend on the participants, because it, we have, they have to calculate the town's share of its unfunded obligations. So there's a withdrawal liability that would have to be calculated based on who's participating and what they, what their amounts were in order to require, to allow for withdrawal. And so that, we don't know the amount, because we don't know the participants and know what our unfunded obligations are.
Okay.
Or the withdrawal liability.
So theoretically, the longer you've been in it, the more likely you're going to have liability?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
And again, it's a program that almost every municipality in Maine offers, not, people aren't really withdrawing from it, so I don't think it's a common thing that happens.
I don't think it would be either, but just raising the question since it's a potential liability. But that's helpful insight. And then, just one final question, then I'll go to Anne and Levi, sorry. What, say that we pass this tonight and it's on the books to allow enrollment beginning July 1st, but our budget does not pass in June at the polls, what is our backup plan for covering these contributions in FY '26 if the budget needs to be amended?
Yeah, so if the budget needs to be amended, like I said, the current contributions that we have, though, aren't equal to that, they, it would cover a majority of the contribution because if people are contributing at the full amount, which we budgeted more accurately this year, they would be, if they moved to this, the increase would be minimal. So if for some reason the budget doesn't pass and we need to make reductions, at that point, we'll know more information about who's participating and who's not participating, and we can more properly budget that after the enrollment period. And then we would be able to make other adjustments in the budget if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Okay, I think that's all I had for now. Levi or Anne, did you have questions?
Yeah, I mainly, well, it's not necessarily questions, but I just, part of what I was going to say, I already had gone there. But I think it's worth underscoring that, you know, when you are looking for an employee, it really helps that they have that prior municipal experience. And town manager Foley mentioned it, that we've had issue where they didn't want to come here because they had so much time already in main PERS. And it would be, unless there was a substantial gap in salary, it just wouldn't make sense. And there's just not that many defined benefit plans, I think, out there at this point that I know of. So it is a very valuable offering to make sure that we get, you know, the best candidate out there who is going to transition the easiest if they have prior municipal experience. And then I also saw some resident feedback, kind of thinking that employees would be getting this on top as opposed to an either/or. So I just want to mention that because that, it's not, it's either/or, not both. And then there was someone, some other feedback from a resident about the fees. I just wanted to reference that we don't have any control of that, that's set by main PERS for both the employee and, or depending on where they're at fund-wise. And that can be corrected, but I'm pretty sure that's accurate, so.
Thanks, Levi. That's good clarifications. Anne, did you have any?
No, I really appreciate Levi chiming in on that. He obviously has more knowledge about it than I do. But I, again, I just think this is something the town needs to do.
One final question for me. I see on packet page 20, there's different plans we could have chosen from, or at least some, some of them are probably ones we've chosen from, and some of them are kind of old plans that were, are not available. Just wondering why we chose the, like, the regular, I believe it was AC plan versus the other regular plans? Like, what was the difference?
The AC is the, basically the standard plan for retirement pension at age 65. And so in the case of the other plans, BC, I forget exactly what plan that is, and the AN, I think some of them are retroactive plans that other people are part of. And then the special plans, those are only eligible for public safety employees.
Right.
And teachers and things of that nature are under the special plans.
Okay. That's helpful, thanks.
And so this is just the rate sheet that we provided, but I think when John and I looked at this, we're only eligible to participate in the AC plan.
Yeah, if you could come on.
If you want to come.
Thanks, John. Sorry, that's a bit of a walk there.
Deanna might be the best person to answer this question, but just again, off the top of my head, the two other plans actually have fewer benefits. So there, it's, the amount that you contribute will entitle you to greater benefits. So that could include something like the COLA, a cost of living adjustment over time. So, but I'll let Deanna speak to the differences between the plans if Deanna is on now.
Yeah, it looks like we do have someone.
Yeah, so I have Deanna on. I've invited her to unmute and allow her camera if she would like to, to maybe speak to the difference in those plans.
I'm putting her on the spot.
Oh, there she is.
If you could just introduce yourself, Deanna, that would be great.
We can't hear her.
Oh, we can't hear you. Hold on one sec.
One moment. Is that, is the audio turned up?
It's not us.
Deanna, is there?
It sounds like your mic isn't working.
Your mic is not working.
If you want to try to call in on the phone again, if that was you the last time, you could do that, and we can unmute you that way.
This happened to my husband once, and he could not figure out how that, it's something about teams, I don't know. Oh. Something's happening.
Okay. I think I've unmuted it, so we should be able to hear you now.
It looks like it's still muted. Oh, there we, there we can hear you. Great.
If you could turn it up, Chris.
Great.
We just had a question about the different plans and whether or not we had options between them, yeah.
So first off, I'm Deanna Doyle. I'm the Plan Administrator for participating local districts, that's the retirement system. So I oversee the plan that the Town of Gray is participating in for its firefighters and looking to add coverage for your general government and appointed officials. So the differences in the regular plans, the regular Plan AC is by far the most common and most popular of the regular plans. It provides a benefit to a member that gives them 2% of their average income per year of service credit they accrue. And at, when they retire at age, normal retirement age of 65 or 60. Regular, it also has a cost of living adjustment provision that goes along with it. And when I say by far more popular, probably 85% of municipalities that cover employees with a plan, a regular plan, choose this plan for their employees. AN offers the same benefit level. It gives a member 2% of their average final compensation or average income per year of service when they retire at normal retirement age. However, that plan doesn't have a cost of living adjustment provision. So it means when somebody retires, we calculate what their benefit is, and that's what they get forever and ever and ever. It never gets adjusted for increases in the cost of living. And the regular Plan BC is really a supplemental plan. It provides a lower benefit than a Plan A. So it does have the cost of living adjustment provision, but it only provides a benefit of 1% of a person's annual average income in retirement for each year of service when they retire at normal retirement age of 65 or 60. So that one is, it's available, but it's not very popular. I think we only have three or four employers that participate in it.
Thank you, Deanna. That's really helpful, not just for us, but the public watching to understand. I appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions for Deanna while she's on the line? No? No, I'm seeing no. Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
One, a couple other questions I had, and we can go to vote unless others have comments after that. One thing I was just wondering about, back to the vesting, was people that have already been here for over five years and have, like, choose to switch to this from what they're currently doing for retirement plans? How does that work? Do they have to start their five years from?
So they could start over, they could start from scratch from the year where they are, or they could purchase their years of service, as was outlined in the order.
Oh, okay.
At their cost. So they could utilize the retirement funds that they've set aside if
One, a couple other questions I had, and we can go to vote unless others have comments after that. One thing I was just wondering about, back to the vesting, was people that have already been here for over five years and have, like, choose to switch to this from what they're currently doing for retirement plans? How does that work? Do they have to start their five years from?
So they could start over, they could start from scratch from the year where they are, or they could purchase their years of service as was outlined in the order.
Oh, okay.
At their cost. So they could utilize the retirement funds that they've set aside, if they've set any aside, in the previous years of employment. And when the person signs up MAINPERS, would calculate what the cost would be to purchase those years.
Okay. Is it similar to what we would do for the rehired people?
Yes.
Is that kind of what the, okay. All right, thank you. I somehow missed that. And then one other thing I just wanted to note was, John noted in here that this is aside from MAINPERS, that we might want to increase our match for the 457B. And I don't really have anything to act on right now, I just wanted to note that as he mentions that offering stronger contributions earlier could improve, because they're tiered right now based on years of service, offering stronger contributions earlier could improve early retention and reduce pressure to join MAINPERS as the most competitive retirement option. So just something to think of.
And that would be something we would probably consider as part of a future budget.
Sure. Okay. All right. Any final thoughts from Levi or Anne? No? Okay, so I will go to vote. I'll start with you, Anne.
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so that passes unanimously for those in the room. Okay. And then I will move back to public comment. And we have one final public comment session on non-agenda items for anyone who would like to comment. We don't have anyone in the room. Do we have any other individuals online?
There's nobody that's raised their hand online to participate.
Okay. Just give it a couple seconds. If you do want to comment in your own line, if you could just raise your virtual hand, we'll open your mic. No?
No.
Okay. I will close our second public comment at 7:33 PM. We don't have any referrals. We have current council referrals listed on here, which the new council can review when they begin in a couple of weeks. And just want to remind everyone, as Town Manager Foley did, that election day is June 10th, 2025. Polls open here at New Begin at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. And the next regular council meeting will be on June 17th, 2025. We do not have an executive session this evening, and so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Anne can second. Anyone opposed to unanimous consent to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep. See ya. Bye.